Meeting is called to order. It's five o'clock. There's no electronic participation, I'm assuming I have not heard. Madam Clerk, have you heard from any board members?
Yes.
All right, so Dr. Day, pledge of allegiance.
Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance stood the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Mrs. Lowry?
Second.
Dr. Day, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Caster?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lauren?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Most encouraged.
Thank you. Next one is student representatives, Dr. Copeland.
We went with Heritage first last time, we'll start with EC Glass.
Hi, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
My name is Claire Ramsey and I'm a junior at EC Glass.
And she's amazing, just so you know. Amazing in first grade.
And I'm actually the treasurer of our student council instead of the student rep. Unfortunately Lucy couldn't make it tonight, but I'm excited to have the chance to present for you guys. With athletics, winter sports has been going well and our teams have shown hard work and progress. Boys varsity basketball started off with the strong seven to two record. Boys JV basketball stands out of one to two record. Girls varsity basketball is working hard with the four to five record. Girls JV basketball is pushing through challenges out of zero to four record. There's is a swim meet on January seventeenth at Monticello High School and a wrestling match on January eighteenth in Levana High School, as well as an indoor track meet at Liberty High School. Moving on, we have a buzzer beater by senior guard Will Wesley, who's now called Ice Cold Will. His game-winning three-pointer against Northside, the two-time defending state champions, gave Glass a fifty to forty-nine win in the Chance Harmon Classic, which is an annual high school basketball showcase that brings together some of the top teams and players from across the region. Coach DJ Best praised the team's effort and focus, which helped them bounce back from a slow start. Hilltoppers are ready to take on a tough schedule and aim for a strong postseason run. The EC Glass Boosters Excellence Awards celebrates student athletes who demonstrate exceptional achievement in academics, athletics, leadership, and character. This season, the award was presented to Holden Howke for golf, Ayanna Horsley for fall cheerleading, and Ava Grace Mayberry for volleyball. Each of these athletes has shown remarkable dedication to their sport while maintaining high academic standards and serving as leaders among their peers. Their hard work and positive influence on and off the field embody the core values of EC Glass High School. This award highlights the importance of balancing athletic success with personal growth and academic achievement. In the Lynchburg Beacon of Hope, on December tenth, the Virginia Tech College Access Collaborative in Lynchburg Beacon of Hope hosted an incredible evening at the Virginian Hotel for the Virginia Tech Community Admissions Event. Seniors had the unique opportunity to meet Virginia Tech representatives, learn about campus life, and even receive non-binding admissions decisions on the spot. It was an exciting night full of possibilities and celebrations. Congratulations to all the future Hokies. The EC Glass Choir in early December spread holiday cheer by performing Christmas carols for the residents at Runkin Pratt. The students' heartfelt performances brought joy and festive spirit to the residents, making it a special occasion for everyone involved. This highlighted the choir program's dedication to community service and connections with local residents. It was a way for students to share the magic of the season while brightening the day of those in the community. In drafting, students showcased their creativity and craftsmanship over the past month by designing and manufacturing ornaments and building small wooden trees. They collaborated to assemble a stunning tree, which was donated to the Tree of Hope fundraiser auction at the Pearson Cancer Center. Their hard work paid off as the tree brought in an impressive top donation of six hundred and fifty dollars. The students did an amazing job and their beautiful creation made a meaningful contribution to the cause. On January twenty-fifth, the EC Glass Student Council is hosting the Winter Snowball Themed Sadies Dance. This event will offer students a fun and festive opportunity to celebrate the winter season with friends. The dance will feature a beautiful snowy atmosphere, complete with decorations that capture the magic of winter. As such as a Sadies Dance, students will have a chance to invite their dates to enjoy the evening filled with music, dancing, and community spirit. The event will be a memorable experience for all attendees and another great example of positive engaging activities organized by the student council. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Hester, what's going on in Heritage?
I hope everybody had an amazing break, I sure did. So before winter break, the MCJROTC cadets landed a helping hand with reefs across America. They had the opportunity to place reefs on tombstones of many beloved veterans. Thank you for your impact in the community, MCJROTC. So for winter sports, our basketball team has a record of, our girls' basketball team has a record of three to seven, and our varsity boys have a record of four to six. Our indoor track and field and swimming and wrestling teams have had an amazing start to their seasons as well. So sophomore Canaj McCarty broke a school record with fourteen feet and eleven inches pole vault, which is amazing for a sophomore. So congratulations to him and I can't wait to see many of his, more of his accomplishments. So our Pioneer Choir before break held their annual winter concert where they sang many songs to bring in the holidays. Such, it was such an amazing way to bring in the holidays. Once again, it was amazing, I got a chance to hear them and they have such beautiful voices. Our DECA team had a success at the district's DECA competition. Many of the students went away with winning first place, second place, third place, and fourth place. Twenty members will be able to go to state at the end of February and the beginning of March. This is one of the biggest groups that we've had in years. Congratulations to the many participants and a big thanks to Mr. Kelso. Thank you to Seven Brew Coffee for giving our staff such a great treat for this week. Have a great day and number one, Big Orange County. That was a swear line. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is... Next one is Program Studies, Dr. Copeland.
So we had brief discussions at the last meeting about Program of Studies. Questions that were submitted by board members were answered by Dr. Davis and it is before the board again tonight. Ms. Davis, if you could come on up, just in case there are any questions. Ever anything you wanted to highlight in the questions that you responded to?
No, thank you for that, Dr. Copeland. I just appreciate you all looking through and asking questions. It allows us to take a deeper dive and really look at things thoroughly. So I appreciate the feedback and the questions and just happy to answer anything else or provide more clarity if it is needed at this time.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Mrs. Lowry, second.
I'll second it.
Dr. Day, a discussion.
Yeah, I just want to add that the answers that Dr. Davis provided have addressed all the concerns that I have. I also had some discussion with Aaron Reed about the AP English Seminar. That was the issue that I was raising last time and he also explained to me. My concern, the one I voiced, was that there appeared to be a sort of essay-writing requirement that was going away, but it's not in fact going away. It's just, as it was explained to me, that we typically don't list all the assignments as part of a course description and that's what we were doing there. And Mr. Reed assured me that they're all, the students will all be doing the same writing work that they have been doing in the past. There's no watering down to the curriculum here, it's just managing the catalog listing. So I'm grateful to Dr. Davis for taking the time to write out the answers to all the questions and so I'm glad to support this motion to approve the...
Ready to vote? Madam Clerk, would you please call the...
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Caster?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lauren?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Most encouraged.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Davis, thank you. Next one is twenty-five, twenty-six budget discussion. Dr. Copeland, I just wanted to add one thing. I think the city council in work session has approved among themselves February eleventh, four o'clock, as our joint city council school board meeting at Business Alliance. So please mark your calendars and I think it'll be prudent if we sort of put it in a low key at the discussion till we have that meeting, so we know where the lay of the land is. But, Dr. Copeland, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. At the last meeting, we briefly discussed the requests that came in from all the departments and all the schools and subsequent emails. Dr. Day mentioned it'd be, it'd be great to bring some of that forward. So that's the sheet that was handed out to you tonight. It was four pages long, so we kind of consolidated and condensed and decided that doing it by kind of school type was, was an effective way to present that. And the row number one, which is division-wide, those are the things that we talked about at the previous meeting. So that's where the bus aids are, that's where the school-based substitutes are. All of the pay raise components are in column row one. Everything else, two through eight, is an aggregation of other requests so that you could see where they come from and what they were designed to support. We wanted to bring that information forward so everybody had it to continue the discussion and that's all I've got for this evening.
You good? I'm looking at Mr. DePaul, Chair of the Finance...
Yeah, we came in, today's meeting was a, was real beneficial with regards to getting some topics up. So did you want me to just...
It's up to you, budget discussion, so anything you want to talk about, please...
Well, we, what was brought up by Dr. Tinsley is we need to get more information before we make decisions. But with regards to efficiencies and consolidations, school closings or reallocations of students or student assets, we, we're also in the discussion as to whether or not the success of some of the programs is going to be a point for, for the Finance Committee. Making the, the idea of when we were talking about consolidating or redistributing the students at TC Miller to other schools and then possibly using TC Miller as a consolidated alternative ed, it was mentioned to bring it up to, for discussion here in tonight's meeting, that what, if we were able to consolidate the alternative ed programs into one location, we could at that point better rationalize the efficiencies, whether or not they're... And if we can't make them more efficient based on what the board deems to be success, we can actually, we might come to the point where we're looking at alternative ed as being a program that should be changed, if not eliminated, for budget reasons, of course, as well as efficiencies. There's, if there's financial evidence or financial reasons for that and if there is a lack of success as far as the programs themselves, the question came up is what would define success in a, in an education program? Is it just graduating, is it SLL scores, is it an improvement personal-wise? Is it to look at whether who go, from those programs, who goes to college, who, or who gets a job? CTE, things like that? Or is it just the fact that we are helping students not fall deeper into destruction, personal destruction? And that's something that we need to define as a board. It's not anything that our committee is going to be able to do itself. And if we do make the decision to go one way or the other, it's going to come to the board for a full vote. So if we want to talk about it now or just let it stew and simmer, that's up to the board. But I'd, I'd like to get our, our wheels turning to determine whether or not Alt Ed is good to be consolidated, whether it's good to be continued. All these things need to help in the part of what we're, we've been tasked to do by the previous city council and as we, if you listen to the radio, what the new mayor is saying. That is, what is our responsibility and what he wants to see us do. It's not on their shoulders, it is our responsibility to make these decisions regardless of budget. We need to be efficient, we need to make the efficiencies. And when we finally get the data for what is, what's happening with, as far as success or numbers from Dr. Brown or from academic, from the committees, we can make those decisions. But we, we should set the parameters sooner as opposed to later as to what we're going to deem as being success and what we're going to need in order to make the decision on consolidating, closing, re-tasking various buildings.
Mrs. Lowry?
And to your point, that's one thing that we talked about January twenty-eighth. I won't be at the Academic Success Committee, but that's something we're looking at is, let's look at all our programs, what has benefited, what has been not, what do we need? Because these things cost, some of these cost money. So what do we need to eliminate, what are we going to keep, what, you know? Because in some ways, it seems like the teachers are using so many variety of programs. Everybody's all over the place, so we want to have some consistency. So that's one of the things that you've mentioned, programs, you know, and stuff. That's one of the things we've been talking about and looking at.
At twenty thousand dollars a student for, for Fort Hill Restorative Academy, you don't have the data, we don't have the data, we've been promised the data. For the year and a half that you and I have been on this board, for the six months the new people have been on the board, we don't have the data. And what is coming back is, is they don't probably have the data.
Well, it's because the kids in Alt Ed are, they're assigned to a home-based teacher instead of the teacher that's teaching them for that test and everything else, so. And, but those teachers at the home-based school don't teach them, so they don't know. So it needs to be all on that teacher that's teaching them, not their SO, they should have their SO scores. They should have, it should be separate from the base school, it should be separate.
Well, and I agree, but we've been on it a year and a half and I know it's been questioned further than that. How come it's just coming to light now? The people that have had this information have kept it from us. These are critical issues, this is critical. And we have people that have been sitting on these board meetings who have known this and they haven't provided the information to say, "We don't have it."
Yes. Just for clarity purposes, I'm just, just so I know, when you talk about programs, are you referring to like teaching?
There's some teaching programs, but some of those cost money.
Programs, like technology? You're talking about groups or like initiatives?
I'm talking specifically about alternative education.
Okay, all right.
That is, that's the thing. And what it comes down to, what's our number one goal? What's LCS's number one?
Educate.
Educate. If kids aren't getting educated, the students are not getting educated, the program that's not educating them should be eliminated.
I just wanted to make sure I understood, the term program, I just wanted to make sure I understood...
She's the big umbrella, I'm just the small.
Mr. Connor?
Have we looked at... We have one school that is on a completely different calendar than every other school.
It's a year-round school.
Have we looked at, is that's cost benefit of that school? Have we looked at the cost versus the return on investment? Having that school year-round, has it provided greater, better, additional? Or is it just something that we're continuing to do because it's something we've all, we've just gotten accustomed to doing? If it's that great, why aren't we looking at expanding it? And if it's not great, why are we continuing it? That's a question I have.
I can answer that to a degree. There was a, when Bass started and it was doing great when it started out and everything throughout, then there was a vote put out to all the teachers, would you all like, what's your, you know, idea of going, all of us going year-round? And that was thrown down for the majority, so it never got, so it stayed with just Bass.
So does Bass cost more than the other elementary schools?
Because they get time off. Every nine weeks they get, two weeks, two or three weeks off.
One week intercession.
So I'm saying, so the cost of running Bass is no greater than...
Yeah, because if you add up their weeks off every nine weeks, you have summer.
So is it benefiting the children at a greater level than the other elementary schools?
It was for a long time, but lately their scores are like the other scores in schools. So I'm not sure what I said.
I would disagree with that.
Well, that's...
Because I thought we saw, looked at some scores and Bass wasn't as high as it used to be.
Well, it's just something that we probably need to look at while we're looking at budgets. Can we, yeah, yeah, I was going to ask the same thing. Can we entertain that? I want to hear your opinion, you said you disagree, I want to know.
Sure. I think it's difficult to attribute student success just to a year-round calendar. There are a lot of other factors that go into that. I think we could certainly look at Bass in terms of attrition of knowledge and loss of knowledge over the summer and perhaps those students have less of that because their summer break is, is only three or four weeks. So they have a shorter break, but their intercessions throughout the school year are just a week. And not all students are required, some students are required to come during intercession. So some students don't even, you know, have that week of intercession off. They will attend based on the needs that they have, where teachers see that they need some additional support and they come to school in the morning, lunch is provided, it's not a full day. But, so it's an opportunity to really provide targeted support for those students who really need that help during the intercession and I think that has been beneficial. While we may have seen a small decline in Bass in some areas, I do believe Bass has maintained accreditation. They've maintained higher scores than some of our other elementary schools that have some of the same, similar racial and socioeconomic makeup. So I do think Bass has been successful. We can certainly look at their, you know, results over time. I think science has been one of the areas in the past couple of years that's been a drop for Bass, but I do think reading and math have at least held steady, if not gained a little bit. Some of their gap groups have come closer together, you know, in terms of, of the gaps, those are lessening. But again, I think, you know, we'd have to look at, is it truly just, is it truly the year-round? Or they also, you have to look at class size, you know, they have smaller class sizes. They have a little bit of a different culture. Their students wear the uniforms, does that make a difference, right? So I think there are different things that fit into that, but to say that they have declined, that's where I would disagree.
Were your number, were your opinion, was that based on numbers that you saw?
Yeah, it was just based on the information, the lesson we were getting back.
That was based on numbers that you saw and you're disagreeing with it? Do you have the numbers to prove it?
I don't have it in my academy, but she admitted it was in science. Yeah, there's a decline in science.
If you take a look at the school quality profile, in every area Bass is exceeding the division-wide average. Even in science, we didn't do well in science, but we know that was because of the alignment issues we have with the curriculum. So Bass is exceeding the division-wide average in every area.
But you saw that it wasn't?
Well, in that, that's probably the science.
All right, well, I just want to make sure, because if, when, numbers are numbers and if I see two, I hear two conflicting reports, someone's wrong.
No, I don't think it was in everything, but I noticed when I looked at Bass.
And there may be some declines and I'm not, I'm not trying to say that they're going up in every subject and I'm not also not trying to hide the fact that every school in Lynchburg City has increases that need to be made, achievement gap needs to lessen. We still have a ways to go to get to that and above, at and above state average. So we, absolutely do, we still have work to do. But in many of our schools, the... But in many of our schools, the gaps for some of our subgroups have lessened, in particular, both of our high schools, our black males, their subgroup scores, you know, their gaps have lessened in some areas. So, you know, while there may have been a decline for Bass in science, I do think, as Dr. Wodoka said, their, their scores are above the division average, you know, overall. So in, in terms of a division school, they are doing as well or better than some of the other elementary schools.
I think there was three of them that were talking, and Bass was close, it was like two or three or something like that.
Let's not interact, let Dr. Day's next one.
Well, I, back to the issue of the alternate education, we have to remember that we have a legal obligation to the state to educate students. We can't just decide this is a undesirable student and put him out on the street. There are circumstances where we can expel a student, but those are pretty limited. So the criteria by which we evaluate our alternate education efforts cannot simply be, are the students doing the same as everyone else academically? We have an obligation to serve those students. Also bear in mind that by taking the students that are having trouble behaving in a traditional classroom setting and moving them somewhere else, we're benefiting all the students that are back in their home classroom that no longer have that disruption. So we, we, we can't think of it solely in terms of how well are the students in the alternate education program doing. We have to think about the welfare of all the students in our district, and is it helping to pull some of the students who are struggling to behave and dealing with them separately in a way that's more appropriate to their behavior issues?
Of course.
Something coming up, but if you go ahead and then I'll put out.
I know I kind of threw a curveball on the alternative education, but once again, as you said, there was a vote, but if Bass's curriculum and schedule is beneficial to the students, even if we didn't roll it out to all the elementary schools, why haven't we looked at a second or third, let's say the lowest, the next lowest struggling elementary, why haven't we looked at saying, why don't we implement this positive rewarding program to this elementary school to bring it up the way Bass came up?
Hasn't come up. I mean, since I've been on here, hasn't come up.
Dr. Tinsley.
No, 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 go ahead.
I just wanted to set the record straight, Mr. Paul. Last year I voted against putting $1.6 million in LCS Restore, because everybody else voted. I don't know whether you were on board last year or not, but everybody else voted. Mumbai, let's go ahead and do it. The reason being, efficiency is fine, but the effectiveness is the other criteria, as you and I talked about. In business, you've got to be, first achieve the goal and then attain efficiencies in the realm of that goal. So effectiveness is important. Last year I thought, no, I don't have the information. I don't blame Dr. Copeland for previous administrations. For last year and a half, I've been asking for those S O L scores repeatedly in private meetings. Have not heard anything because of different constraints. Having said that, I fully understand the budget discussion needs to be much more broader. You look at things, and Dr. Wodoka, as a witness, have been saying that for almost three, four years. We are a community server for every local locality here. We pay for their health insurance. We cover them in Laurel, we cover them in Fort Hill Academy. When it comes to our trash collection, they throw us out on the street. Campbell County did it to Lynchburg, city of Lynchburg right now. We are left out in the cold trying to put our own money. You see what I'm saying? The school system has been cuffing up, last year was $350,000 in health insurance, where they should do their fair share. How many years I've been saying that, right? There has to be a fair share of the regional cooperation of this alliance. That has not happened. You know what I'm saying? So there are a lot of areas of efficiency or savings we can achieve, we should have achieved, we must have achieved, but they have not. They are talking points during the budget discussion, and when the budget is approved, everybody votes and they go home. You know, and nobody looks at finer points, has it been included or not? So you look at all these, we had Laurel lease agreement, where the lease agreement says we will provide health insurance for every employee. Which apartment complex will give you free health insurance for signing up the lease? You tell me one single place. You understand what I'm saying? We have a 40-year lease for Gov. School for $70,000 apiece, 40 years, four zero. You understand what I'm saying? So our hands are tied, there's no negotiation possible to put more students into those seats by, you know, instead of increasing, give me more spaces. So there are a lot of discussions we need to have, but in terms of type, timeline, you look at 11th is the joint city council school board meeting. Assuming by 18th work session, we'll have an alt-education data from the administration.
Circle.
Yeah, and I think that's the time we should look at, maybe through finance and facilities, a much broader, deeper dive into what are the places, right? Where people are not pitching in for us to be moving forward. And as I gave you certain areas, $350,000 for health insurance. You know, we, our students are virtual, and I've said we are providing to localities, like other counties have space in our Fort Hill Academy. Is there a?
That's a regional facility, Fort Hill.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I don't know how many surrounding school divisions attend Fort Hill right now.
We cover all the expenses, right? They don't do, they give us a dime for running Fort Hill Academy? I don't think so.
Get some state money for it.
Say it again?
There's some state money for it, I doubt it covers the costs.
Yeah, so there's no courtship, you know what I'm saying? We're putting our own kids in a virtual place, and we're taking neighbors' kids into the house. Because there are a lot of areas which have been a hard burn for me, and I've spit it out for you.
Then we close the programs, and we restructure them differently. We close those programs, and then we reinvent them in another way. We, the lease is done. We're done. We then close them out and have a different program under a different rule where we control it.
So let's have that discussion in finance and facilities and.
Well, no, we're doing that now. Let's do it now.
Not in a very short, it has to be a much more comprehensive discussion.
Can we, can we close them down?
Is it possible for me, just to clarify with Bass, I just want to make sure that we're not?
Oh, we're on a roll with the alternative ed. We got it rolling.
So a point of clarity on alternative education. The code of Virginia requires school divisions to provide alternative education. Okay, so there has to be some component of that provided. We have several, we have many different components that are focused in different areas, but I didn't want anyone on the board to walk away from this meeting thinking that we cannot do, we have to do alternative education in some form to support our students, just like Dr. Day said.
For years, what I've been saying is, like Gov. School, the chair and the superintendent rotates from each year from the localities. So one year is Bedford County Superintendent and Bedford County School Board Chair, is a Gov. School Board Chair. So let the localities pay for that facility, you know, in alternate way. You see?
I agree.
This year is Lynchburg, next year is Amherst, the following year is Bedford. Everybody has shared their responsibility, and that has not happened in seven years on my school board. You see what I'm saying? So there has to be some fair share by other localities, no more free rides. And I've been saying that, Dr. Wodoka, you were running finance for the last two years, sir, that no more free rides, but that has not happened. So God give you all the strength, hopefully this year you'll make it happen. But I would say just take a step back. Closure creates anxiety in people, so we, we, we do it with a, with a much broader discussion, because the budget process has just started. You know, it's only January, city said they will not do any budget discussion till March.
If, if we want to address that issue, seems to me that what we have to do is first, get a list of all the programs that you're talking about, the pro, the, the regional programs, look at the legal agreements we have with all of those. What do the leases require? Because that determines where we can change things and where we can't. So it's, it's, it's like anything else, we have to get the information first before we can decide what to do. We can talk about it a lot, but until we have the specific information in front of us, we can't move forward. So I would suggest that someone be tasked with generating the list of what programs they are, there are in that category that are regional programs, and then let's look at the leases and legal agreements we have for each of those and see what, when do the leases expire? What are the terms of the lease? Can they be terminated? Can they be adjusted? We need to know all that if we're going to try to address that issue.
Absolutely.
As we have these discussions, I would also offer that we continue to keep stakeholders involved, right, community involved, because what we don't want to do is any trust that we've already built, tear that down because we're trying to rush a vote or rush through a process, especially when we're about to go through budget season, and we're hiring a superintendent, we're trying to figure out whether we're closing a school or not. So before we say, "We're getting rid of alternative education," it would be prudent for us to, if we have those discussions, to invite community members in to have those conversations with us, at least at the very least, public comment, right? So I just don't want us to start shooting ourselves in the foot.
This isn't, I didn't mean to imply.
No, I'm just, I'm just.
I'm saying we need to start doing something. We're not doing our jobs.
So I suggested what the first steps should be.
Yes, agreed.
Dr. Tinsley.
Well, I think that includes all the other data that we need as well about success, student success in the alternative ed program. One of the things I brought up in the Finance Facilities Committee meeting was, you know, one of the data points we need, we need to be looking at too is the recidivism of these students. You know, if we're in a restorative program, it's about rehabilitation, it's about getting the students back into the classroom. How well are we doing that? But I'm, I'm not a proponent, regardless of the legal aspect, I'm not a proponent of getting rid of all the ed, but we need to take a hard look at it and see where we need to adjust it, make changes, make it better. But I agree with you, I think we get, you know, all the legal data and agreements that we have with other jurisdictions.
Looks like finance and facilities, you have hands full, right? Collecting that information. Dr. Connor, love.
We also need to know how much alternative education is costing now, so that we can compare it to a potential solution.
Absolutely.
Whether it be per student or per facility, how much is this facility with these students costing us versus how much this facility, because we're in four, I believe, four different facilities right now, or parts of four different facilities.
All over, yeah.
So we kind of need to know a cost and what, so that when we are finding a consolidated solution, we can say, this is what is costing us now, this is what it would cost us if we were to build in some efficiencies.
Makes sense. Dr. Day, last and final comment.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we did have a report from Dr. Brown a year ago or so about that particular aspect of the LCS Restore program, about how many students were generating new disciplinary referrals for that facility and after that facility. I will try to locate that and.
Seventy-eight was number, I don't know.
Yeah, so we, we have had, we have had the behavioral aspect at least reported at some time in the past, not the financial.
It makes sense to have a per student cost and the total cost of the structure, so.
I think you had something.
What, you're saying something?
I think you had something.
Now, we're good? All right, so we'll continue this discussion, very productive. Now, next one is consent agenda items, they have been added? Human resource report and human resource addendum report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Moved. Second.
Would you please call the role? Mrs. Lowry?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gutten?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lauren?
Yes.
Thank you. Next one is the Ad Hoc Superintendent Search Committee, Dr. Tinsley.
Yeah, so after what seems like an eternity through the holidays, we're finally back engaged in the Ad Hoc Committee. Contract was finally signed and with McPherson and Jacobson, myself and Dr. Nilles, Nilles, co-chair of the committee, had a, just a logistics meeting with McPherson and Jacobson's executives last Friday, and just kind of laying out what the next meetings would be, next steps. And so the next step is being taken, this Thursday, McPherson and Jacobson will be meeting with the Ad Hoc Superintendent Search Committee to discuss particularly stakeholder meetings. You all should have all gotten an invitation, yeah, so you got that. So we're starting those stakeholder meetings with, already, with board members and with city council. At the meeting on Thursday, we will be discussing the other stakeholder meetings with teachers and business leaders and administrators in the school system and the community at large and all the stakeholders that we have. So we're going to be discussing that, and getting Jacobson moving on those stakeholder meetings. They have not guaranteed us, but said that they are going to work towards a end of April notification of, you know, end of April, us being able to notify the public of who our next superintendent will be. Now, whether that'll happen or not, we'll see, but they, they said they have a lot of experience in this and that that's well within the timeframe of their planning. So that's what we're aiming at, that's where we are, and I think things are going to start to really pick up speed at this, at this point.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Day.
I communicated with you through an email about this, well, I would like the board members in advance of the meetings that were being scheduled with them to know roughly what we're going to be talking about so that we can think about it in advance.
So you're going to be, basically, what we're going to be talking about in those meetings is what you want to see, what are the characteristics of the next superintendent? What are the important things that you want?
Well, that's, that's the kind of answer that I was looking for.
Well, and, and you should have been asked for your top three characteristics, right?
I haven't been.
From email, from.
Yeah, it was in the email.
It was.
Schedule up for the one, two-on-one.
Yeah.
What, what email?
From.
The invitation.
From what?
The Zoom email.
Oh, there was instructions in there? I thought it was just about scheduling.
Yeah.
There was, okay, well, then I overlooked that when I read the email.
Tina can forward it to you again if you.
No, I still have it, I just need to go back and read it more carefully.
Hey, we're good.
That's all I have, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Tinsley. I'll sign up, I'll take Ms. Day's help. Informational item is legislative, L A C R, January 21st at 3:30. Academic success, January 28th at 3:30. Next school board meeting, February 4th at 5:00 P. M. Finance and facilities on February 11th at 3:30.
We're moving that forward.
That has to move because of the joint meeting.
If the joint meeting's held, we're moving it to the 18th.
Eighteenth, all right. So the finance and facilities on 18th at same time, 3:30?
Yes, sir.
And then Discipline Data Review Committee meeting, February 13th at 3:30. And next school board work session, February 18th at 5:00 P. M. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.